I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance certified of the United States of America and truly proud of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. I'd like to thank the police chief, Chief Patillo, being here, and the press as well. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councils want to make changes to the agenda? The next item is five council comments. First for comments will be Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remind the public that District 10 Voluntary Day is this Saturday, July 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Behind the historic fireworks building on Little Walnut, that's right next door to Jose Barrios, and you can actually park there in the parking lot if you want. We're going to be installing parklit features and creating a little area for refreshment behind the historic fireworks. The next comment I have is that the council got a written short report from retired Air Force Colonel Susan Beck, and then I saw in today's Daily Press, part of an article letting us know the update from officials in the Pentagon on the timing of the release of the draft environmental impact statement that will detail the decisions the Air Force is making on the Holloman Air Force Base F-16 training, including which airspace alternatives they are choosing. That draft is expected to be in the fall, so we're not going to get it in the summer. She says that probably late September or even later. And that's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let everyone know that the Western New Mexico University Museum invites the public to celebrate our 45th anniversary during the day, on Sunday, July 14th. We all have light refreshments available from 11:00 a.m. until they run out. The museum's regular hours are 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, on July 14th, the Western New Mexico University Museum, Western New Mexico University and the town of Silver City are sponsoring a free lecture by Dr. Harry Schaper, chancellor and investigator of the Nan Ranch Archaeology Project, on what the Nan Ranch ruin has revealed about the member's culture and people. The lecture will be in my hall theater at 6:00 p.m. and will be followed by a question and answer period. So if you have never got a chance to see or hear Dr. Schaper speak, he's really quite good and has lots of interesting information about the Nan Ranch ruin, which is right here in Grant County. And also, the Clay Festival begins next week, on July 15th. There's an abundance of activities and events, lectures to do on our website, so please enjoy Clay Festival next week as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few things. The first one is I'd just like to thank the gentlemen that work in the Parks Department. They worked really hard on 4th of July. I watched them going around making sure everything was clean, and after the event, it was spotless at golf park. And also, there was one who, unfortunately, I did not catch his name, who was really helpful to me. As you all know, I'm in a wheelchair most of the time, and he helped me navigate through the park, which is actually a lot harder than you think during an event. So to that gentleman, you know who you are. Thank you very much. Also, on 4th of July, I got to witness something I had never seen before. Because of where I was parked, I happened to watch a Silver City police officer conduct a physical variety test, which I had never seen before, and I was pretty fascinated by the whole process. But the main thing was, I was so impressed with the level of professionalism by that patrol woman. It was a woman. I don't know her name, but I can describe her to the chief if he wants to know who she is. The person that she pulled over was not a very nice person, and he was not very nice to her, and she just, the level of class and calm was just amazing. So I really appreciate the direction that the police department is going in. I think it's really good for the community, so, your patrolmen, I really appreciate it. And then the last thing is that Senator Ramos, who happens to be in the audience, invited me to a meeting with a couple of our county commissioners and with the forest supervisor for the Hila National Forest, his name is Adam Mimbanka, a couple of days ago. And we learned a lot about the Forest Service and what they're doing for the community, and it was a really good opportunity to sit down with some of the commissioners to start working on some new projects, hopefully. And I'm hoping that we can invite Mr. Mimbanka to come and do a small report, because I think the community doesn't really know what the Forest Service is doing necessarily. I mean, they're there on the hill, but we don't really know the little things that they're doing to make our community better. So if we can invite them at some point to be here, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I enjoyed the fireworks this past weekend, as we all did. The only thing is that I just hope that people will light them in their yards or in the streets to clean up after their mess, as I did travel somewhere down to different parts of our town, and I saw some empty containers. We must be responsible for our actions, so hopefully the people will take note of that. Otherwise, they'll take their privilege away, and I don't think we want to have their privilege taken away from us. Don't forget that this weekend, on the 13th, we have a meeting at the Knights of Columbus, July 13th, at 10:00 a.m., and it's going to be a community discussion for permanent supportive housing. And they are trying to see if we can put something up there by the senior citizen area. So I have my feelings about those, but we need support from the people to show if they want to or not want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Senator Ramos, I didn't see you when you came in. Could you stand up so we can recognize you? It's an honor to have you with us tonight. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the June 25, 2019, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting in the town of Silver City of June 25th, 2019.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilwoman Edison? Councilwoman Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take the best motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Minutes approved. The next item on the agenda is public input. Now, we've got quite a few people here who signed the public input sheet, and I just want to tell you, by resolution, the council has passed certain guidelines for public input, limiting public input to five minutes each, but also limiting the total amount to 20 minutes. Now, I know plenty of you traveled long ways to come here tonight, so it's my intention to hear everybody who wants to make some public input. But first, I want to ask your cooperation and make it as short as possible, so we don't go way past our allotted time. So I'm going to call on those who signed up first, in the order that you signed up. And when you come up to the microphone, push that little button to make the light come on, so we can all hear you. First on the list was Ken Sexton.
Okay. I'm Ken Sexton, and I serve on the Trails and Open Spaces Advisory Committee. One of my tasks is to hike the San Vicente town area, the creek area, and we've been, this is my second term, and I've been observing, reporting, a lot of vandalism in the last year and a half. As a group, the Trails and Open Space Committee has recommended a lot of repairs of fences and gates. These have been carried out, and some of the plans involve increasing fortifications, as we've been out of Com, heavy pipes on the ends of roads where people are known to be taking four-wheel vehicles into the area. And once they get in there, then they cut fences or break down gates to get to the rest of the trails. This has been an ongoing process. It's been frustrating for the committee. Part of the problem is that we can't get the repairs for the heavy fortifications, so we just replace our wire fencing gates, and we place locks and chains. So the concern is that if the ordinance for 1281 has passed, the NOI, there's going to increase traffic of ROVs and other four-wheel vehicles. This is going to put increased pressure on that park area. Looks like all kinds of vehicles of all sizes are going into the San Vicente area, including, and all four-wheel vehicles are banned, prohibited from entering that area, but as we've heard before, it's difficult to police that area. There's even been ATVs observed on Marketplace. I don't, I have not walked over Boston Hill as much, but I've watched these ATVs drive up on Marketplace. I don't know if they're trying to enter Boston Hill with the several trailheads that are there. Anyway, I'm recommending that the ordinance to allow ROVs on the town roads not be approved. Then I have one quick question. This might be the eternity question.
We don't, we don't have communication during the public input. It's strictly public input.
Okay. So I would just ask that Section 12, which is not cited in the NOI, Section 12 be investigated. It allows for ROVs on highways just to connect areas where the roads, where the roads do allow ROVs. I think this might be confusing to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent Bowe?
Hello. I'm Trent Bowe, a local citizen and businessman. I'm here in support of the notice of intent. One solution to an issue he just stated, and I'd actually be happy to help sponsor the trail cameras, I think if there's some spots where there's a systematic problem where people are breaking the law, let's put some trail cams on there. I'd be happy to sponsor that, and let's put an end to that right there. But this isn't about ATVs going in San Vicente Creek. This is about access to our trails from town, and it's also about the economy we have in our town, and when we compare this with a town like Ria del Sol or Sedona, which does allow this, it's something that's, it's a good tool for recreation, a good tool for people to see our town. My position is I think that we open our streets up to more people. Our people who have galleries and the small restaurants will have more traffic than just pass the by town by right now. So I would like to see this opened up, so I think there's people who are interested in doing wintertime events here. We don't get a lot of tourists coming through here in January, so I would definitely help shepherd in any sort of tourist event that could happen. I think this would be a good thing for our town. And again, when I go to Sedona, when I go to Ria del Sol, which are very nice, beautiful towns, the people are respectful of our law. These are a lot of violent citizens, typically in their 40s plus, and they don't just get reckless because they have access to the different vehicles. So I'd like to see that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Alvarez?
My name's John Alvarez, and I came from South Dakota, and I've driven an off-road utility vehicle for 17 years to keep my nonprofit organization running. Then I come down here to Silver City, and my privilege for driving a, my privilege for having a driver's license is canceled, because I cannot drive anything else, because I sustained a brain injury, and my doctor said if I pass the test, I can drive an off-road utility vehicle. I passed the test, and here I am, driving a utility vehicle for 16 years, up to now. I'm very hopeful that we can pass the ordinance, so I can go to the dentist, go buy food for my wife and I, go get pills for us. My wife will be going to her second operation. She ended up with cancer, and we already went to hell already, and I've been driving my utility vehicle to get to the doctor and get pills and buy the food. Now, I would like to be legal to do all this. She's going to another operation, and I really, really need my driver's license to be active to pay to try and drive. Thank you very much, Mayor, and everybody.
Thank you. Daniel Calorado?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
No.
No. I'm pushing a button down. Oh. I'm not sure what the fireworks ordinance is. I didn't do any research, I'm sorry. But I feel the councilperson's pain when he sees a lot of the debris left after 4th of July celebrations, because responsibility is something that we see less and less of, and as a result, we see more and more trash. But I'm here mainly to talk about the noise that we have in the town during the, what is it, eight or 10-day window of fireworks. And if the ordinance allows for a 10-day window to blow off fireworks, then I think that's excessive, and I think we should reduce the number of days that we can have legal fireworks. Sunday night, there were fireworks well after 10 o'clock. And people, some people work for HMS Hidalgo Medical Services, they drive to Lawrenceburg, and to have to be disturbed on a Sunday night before you have to drive to work, it's excessive. And I think a lot of people would agree that, you know, the fireworks celebration is a matter of pride for local communities and for our country. But I think that we need to curtail the number of days for the wildlife that we like to advertise here, you know, think wilderness, and for our pets, and for people with hearing aids. And I look forward to trying to work on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Kason?
My name's Julie Kason. I'm a local business owner here in Silver City, have an RV park on Bennett Street behind Food Basket. My issue is the fireworks. My issue is twofold. One is with the duration that Mr. Gallardo was just speaking of. I was told five days before, five days after, so that's really 11 days, I guess, if that's correct, and up till midnight. This is what I was told by dispatch. I think it's terribly excessive, and I don't think that many days has anything to do with 4th of July. It's just about shooting off fireworks by that point. My second issue is really fireworks in the city limits, these loud booming firecrackers that can catch fire. We had a fire in the ditch behind our park less than six months ago. It was really scary. If a tenant hadn't called it in, seen it, called it in, and the firemen hadn't been amazing, the volunteer center, the Knights of Columbus, and us, we would have all burned. It caught just like that. Also, folks in my RV park that are on the road over on 13th, closer to Corbin, they thought it was raining, there was so much debris falling on the roofs of their RV. We had people on fire watch all night long, and they were petrified. Our RVs do not have roofs like houses. They go up just like a tinderbox, and this stuff was all coming over the fence, into our business, into the ditch, for hours and hours and hours, into the wee hours. And these are loud booming, crazy fireworks. And, you know, it just seems to me, in my perfect world, there wouldn't be these, these type of fireworks allowed in the city limits. I don't think that you should have to have that so close to your home and be subjected to it. There's many towns in this country that don't allow them in the city limits at all, even in the whole state, unless it's a show being put on by a licensed group. So it's kind of twofold for me. The duration and going till midnight for 10 days, those of us who have to get up and go to work, like he was saying, are animals, folks with PTSD or vets. I mean, it starts at 10 o'clock at night usually, and it has been. I don't know if any of you guys live in the city, and you're going, trying to settle down and go to bed, and you've got your animal with you, and boom, it starts, 10 o'clock. You hear this loud boom that sounds like a war zone. You're up, your animals are shaking, maybe your kids are up. I mean, it's totally, to me, unnecessary. There's a way for us to do this responsibly, and I feel like we can do that, so that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roberta Robinson?
I'm okay. Good. I'm Roberta Robinson. I've lived in Silver City for four years. I'm originally from Maine. You'll probably recognize the accent. We have no fireworks at all in the state of Maine unless there are shows put on by professionals. Part of that is respect for the wildlife that lives there, and part of it is because fires have started and not been good. So my first introduction to fireworks was over in Hawaii when I was in the Navy, and to be honest with you, they put Silver City to shame. I mean, they, it was so bad over there, they literally put out an ordinance, you couldn't use more than 100 firecrackers at a time, so you had to get a permit, because it was so loud over there. I enjoyed the 4th of July here, it was a wonderful day, until, I live in Julie's Park. I live in a park model RV. My neighbor came over because he was going up and down the road, checking for spot fires or something, and I was holding his little shaking dog for two and a half hours. All right? It was scary. Living in a park model RV, or any RV, is scary. A month ago, we had a fire in an RV. That fire went up so fast, you, I hailed the Silver City Fire Department. They've saved us twice this year, you know, in our little park. So it, and I admit that that fear is still with me, and that's part of the reason why I was afraid during the fireworks. But I think it's an issue that's worth talking about, that's worth looking into, the safety issue. I don't have the facts. I may be entirely out to lunch. It may be perfectly safe, but I would like to know that. I'd like to hear that from the fire department, what they have to say, because they have to deal with it. And I know they did go out on some calls, so we hear them go out every time they go. So I know they went out on calls that night, and I don't want to see anybody's children hurt. I don't want to see anybody's house burned down. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Ferris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Ferris, and I'm a resident of the city, and also I chair the town's Trails and Open Space Committee that we created about a year ago. First, I want to thank you for your service. I know it's difficult to balance all the competing needs in a town like this, a lot of diverse interests, and, but my, I'm here tonight to speak to the ROV ordinance and urge that you not pass it tonight, you stay with your previous position last year. And the reasons that were spoken to by my associate Ken Sexton, who's also on our committee, and who pointed out well how it's very difficult to control the access to San Vicente. It's a big area, and a lot of the fencing is just wire fencing, and it's really easy to just, you know, clip, clip a piece of wire right next to a gate and be right, right in there, and it's very tempting. I mean, I own an ROV ATV, and I know how much fun it is to get off-road and whiz around up hills and down around. And my concern I have is not that every ROV owner is going to be irresponsible, but that once they're in the family's hands, some younger people do, will succumb to the temptation. Once they can drive right to the open space, very easy then to just go right on onto it. That's our concern. We're making great progress as a committee on Boston Hill, and I don't know if you've been up there or not. I urge you to, if you haven't, because there's been a lot of nice improvements going on in the trails up there by volunteers and city as well. And we hope to have a nice celebration of the 20-year anniversary of its acquisition here in October. But San Vicente continues to be a real tough one for our committee to figure out what to do. And we, it's very obvious that the city does not have the resources to police it or continue to make the repairs that are necessary. So the only thing I can say is this does not make the problem worse by making these really neat areas. Silver City's unique in having these two big pieces of open space, quite different, right at our, right at our doorstep of downtown. There are not many cities that have that, right around the country. We need to, we need to preserve that, because it gives us a unique flavor. We don't need to join the fray and become a motorsport city. What we really have in long-range vision is an opportunity to create a different kind of natural environment that attracts people who really like the peace and quiet and enjoying nature and hikers. We happen to be Airbnb hosts, and a lot of the people that come and stay in our place are there because they have hiking boots or mountain bikes with them, and they tend to go downtown to eat and shop in the stores and come back with art and all, so.
Mike, could you?
Okay, I'm winding up here now, but I just want to say, for the bigger picture, think about the image that we're creating here, and what the unique thing we have that we want to hang on to. Thanks for your.
Thank you. That's everybody who signed up. However, I know some people came in late. One time after a meeting, someone from the audience came up to me, and I really chewed on him, and he said, "You let that public input go for more than 20 minutes." Well, I like to take my cue from Senator Ramos when he was chairman of the county commission, and I think if you put forth the effort, you ought to have an opportunity to let your voice be heard. How many more people would like to have some public input? Raise your hand. Okay, so Ron, I thank you for first to raise your hand, so come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ron Troy, and yeah, just, I work with the Trails and Open Space Group here as well, and I guess a couple of points, I just want to reiterate what Mike Ferris said, that how unique this community is. It is something special, and I feel bad for being up here even saying anything. I moved in here four years ago from Idaho, and I saw so many towns. And I think the gentleman who mentioned Sedona and Moana or whatever, I think if you went back to those residents that were there before their communities were inundated with OHVs, those residents- those residents would maybe think twice about what was allowed at that point. I think it's great for a lot of the new members of those communities, but again, Silver City's something very unique anymore, and I do a lot of land protection across the Rocky Mountain West, and I feel like I've seen a lot of communities. And the other thing I want to reiterate, my wife's a teacher here, and between teaching and law enforcement, anything we can do to make their jobs easier as city leaders, I think we should be doing that. And I think that should be a huge consideration in this. If law enforcement is concerned about this issue, I think it's worth taking heed. And one last thing, I don't think this issue is ever going to be put to bed regardless of how you guys vote. It's always going to be a controversial issue, and maybe as a suggestion, put it to vote for the community. And maybe, I don't know if that's possible or not, but again, there's a lot of people interested in this issue, and it's a controversial issue at a county level and at a city level. Maybe a vote is the way to do it.
Thank you, Ron. When you come up, would you identify yourself clearly so Ms. Mackey can get your name down?
So, I do have to press? Or it's already pressed?
My name's Stephen Van Damontel. I live Silver City. I've only been here nine months. This is my first meeting, so I'm really glad to get a feel for what's happening here and what the issues are. I have two quick comments. One, I lost sleep three nights in a row because of the fireworks, and I wasn't too happy about that. I really would like to see that ordinance revisited. The other thing is about the ATVs on the streets. I live right near where there are ATVs on private property, and they're very, very noisy. I would really hate to see that level of noise introduced onto the streets of Silver City. There is already a lot of noise here. The noise ordinance, as far as I can tell, is not really enforced, you know, the trucks and diesels and that kind of thing already. A lot of diesel trucks and that kind of thing to add, potentially even more noise, especially downtown. I would ask that that element be considered in the decision.
Thank you. Who was in the back? I've had your hand up. Come on up, please.
My name's Danny Ellis. First thing I'd like to state is I'm not new to Silver City. I've lived here my whole life. I live in the Range Valley. I own a business in the Range Valley. I am in automotive business, I do work on ATVs, boats, motorcycles, whatever. I would like to see the UTVs legalized. I do happen to own a home over in T R C. They approved it over there last year, and it really isn't that big of a deal. You wouldn't even know that they were approved if you drove through town. You might see one or two of them driving around. It's really not all that big of a deal. They don't make much noise, they don't, it's really not, it's not a problem. And I've seen them over there have, I went over there in February, they had a big UTV poker run. This was in Elephant Butte. It was over at a big RV park over there in Elephant Butte. Put on this UTV poker run, there was probably a couple hundred vehicles that showed up, everybody paying, you know, $30, $40, whatever, per vehicle. They made a huge amount of money. They made money for the state park. They made, you know, the restaurants made money, the hotels made money, the golf course made money. It was a big success. Nobody got hurt, nobody got out of hand. Somebody's UTV caught on fire, and it burned down. The fire department came, took care of it. Unfortunate for that person, I don't know why that happened, but that was the only bad thing that happened. Nobody got hurt, just their car caught on fire. I have the place owned in T R C. Every once in a while, I might see one of these cars driving down the road, going to the store, but it's really just not that big of a deal. It's perfectly fine over there. I think it would be perfectly fine here. Thank you.
My name is Pete Magdaleno. I'm from Silver City, New Mexico. And I just wanted to make you pay your attention about the last meeting. I'm not too sure if I misunderstood you about the state being involved, about the side-by-side four-wheeler incident, that they already issued license plates, on-road, off-road tags for the bikes. I already went and looked into getting my insurance for my four-wheeler. I was just, would like you guys to go ahead and pass the ruling to allow it. If you think about it, it'd be pretty good, and the environmental here, because of the fuel, prices are real high, and I think a lot of people would be, you know, be nice to give, or go get your groceries and pay probably $0.50 on the dollar to go get your groceries, medication, whatever, doctor visits here locally. I just thought I'd mention that about the license plates and stickers that were already issued on it. I don't know what you guys would decide to do about it. If you don't pass it, take it up with DMV, or I don't know what will happen now, because that sort of thing, a lot of people paid for them already. I just thought I would bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Come on up, Senator.
Well, thank you, first of all, for having me, and thank you for all you do. I know sometimes it's tough to be a public servant, but we do it because we love it right, and we want to do things for our communities. I want to thank you for putting on such a nice festivity on the Fourth of July, and also for the Little League Tournament, District Seven Tournament that was here in Silver City. It was so neat to see so many kids involved and playing on that ball field, on those beautiful ball fields that you have down at Scott Park. I also want to say, you know, it's great to have the Tour of the Gila here, the Blues Fest, and I was also here, I am also here to ask you to consider the UTVs in the area. And the reason I say that is because we promote tourism. We have tourism for the forest, we had, what, 8,000 people downtown? We have tourism for these Little League tournaments. We have the state tournament going on this last week where the local District Seven team won the event. They were coming in from Deme. The Tour of the Gila brings in so many people and such a great event, and the Blues Fest does too. And why not try this ordinance for a bit to see how it works? You can always remove it if it's too bad. You know, I really do get concerned with the UTV ordinance, because we have a lot of people that are special needs, and the only step that they're missing to get to our forest from Silver City is the Silver City area and being able to pass through through the county and then over to the forest. This could actually be a great tourism tool. And I just came back from the White Mountains, where you see UTVs, because it's legal everywhere there, and it's not a bad deal. You have people coming in from all over New Mexico and all over Arizona to utilize the forest and have a good time there. Of course, there's always a couple of bad apples, but we need to make sure we take care of those bad apples and do what's best for the people. And I think this could be a really good thing for our area, because we have one of the most beautiful forests in the Southwest. And the more people that can utilize it, whether it be by bicycle, by hiking, by birdwatching, by hunting, by fishing, or UTV use, I think we need to allow it, because this is called the Gila National Forest, land of many uses. And again, I'm all for conservation, I'm all for keeping our public lands public, but I also feel that we need to utilize them by allowing something like UTVs and tourism to take its course. Thank you very much, and again, I thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, please.
Hi, my name is Gwen Lamaysey, and thank you so much for your service and for this forum. I would like to, Mayor, we already sent you an email in response to the ATV ordinance, so I won't go into any of that, but just to highlight, we actually have a business, mixed-use, and living space right on Bullard. I think we're one of the few residents, if any, only one on Bullard. So, we're susceptible here, the fireworks, which is a whole other issue, but the ATVs, I think there's really no reason, as an Economic Development Council summit coming up here in October, I think maybe we should wait and really have a weigh-in, just what effect these ATVs have on other communities. I have looked at the new top, I've seen what's happened. Noise level and noise ordinances downtown are not enforced at all, and I can't imagine the police force, the amount of work they would have to do going forward. It is noisy, on Bullard, revving engines, and I guess my hoping is, people usually that bring ATVs, I'm not against them. There's a place for it and a time for everything, are usually trailed in. There's not really the idea that someone needs to ride down Bullard or Nidey on an ATV. I don't think we have tourist RV parks close enough vicinity that someone would be coming in and economically giving back to the community from the ATVs. Alvea Pole, where I moved here from a while back, we had a thought about the blank spot on the map, because airplanes would fly over, and there were no lights, there was so much conservation and open lands. Here, I think about Alvea Pole and the blank spot on the map as the silence, as the Bullard ness, as something we have so special here, and I'd hate to see it go the way that I see in other communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, well, thank you very much for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of privilege, a short break.
Okay. Point of privilege, we need to take a short break, about five minutes. Is that okay?
Thank you.
I'm calling out, beating back the order. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
The only report I have is I just wanted to remind everybody about the wine festival that will be going on this next weekend that the town is sponsoring. It's going to actually be the first event that we actually fence in the entire park, and hopefully it's a model for future projects like the Blues and Counsel Ray, I believe you're working on, working with the group on another project that might be happening. But I think for the long-term sustainability of some of the events that we have in town, this is the way that we need to go, rather than the city paying for everything. I think the attendees need to contribute, so I just wanted to remind everybody that it'll be going on Saturday and Sunday this week. That's it.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
That's it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item 10A, is the approval/disapproval of ordinance number 1281 and ordinance amending section 12-7-9 through 12-7-9.10, off-highway motor vehicles, definitions, et cetera, of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as the Silver City Traffic Ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 50-1 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. Counsel Ray, you're the sponsor of this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well, here we are, once again. This NOI that we're proposing, I'm proposing, we've got to remember that we are not pushing for ATVs. We have never said that. We are always pushing for UTVs. There's a big difference in the UTVs and the ATVs. We discussed this the last time around with the Trails people, and we told them that we were not going there, and we haven't gone there. I'm sure that there are people in ATVs that have gone down there, and we said that the last time around. These vehicles are not loud, as some people claim to be. They're not loud. Your diesel trucks are louder. I like to hear a lot of traffic downtown. It makes it vibrant. Some people don't like it, some people do like it. I happen to like it. You know, getting back to the fireworks. To me, it's a good thing that there's fireworks. It makes it look like the town is alive, not dead. If they want to have fireworks, let them have fireworks. There's nothing wrong with that, except be responsible. We heard a lot of comments that they want to change the rules. Once we start changing rules here, we're going to lose a lot of things. There's too much government intervention with the public. And I know some people don't like it, I know some people are smiling, think I'm crazy. Maybe I am. But anyway, the only thing that I would say about this NOI, that if anybody, if it was to pass, and if anybody wants to trailer that vehicle downtown, on the truck and be downtown, that's a no-no. We won't do that. Nothing has changed on this NOI. And I would like to see if the chief would like to say something before we go to, before I make a motion, or see what he has to say, if possible. See for detail.
What do you want him to report on?
If he's got any issues or any other comments or...
I had to get what you'd like to... Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. I spoke to several agencies, municipalities, and I'll name them out real quick, El Magoro, T R C, Clovis, Farmington, Red River, Grass, Roswell, police departments. I have several issues, safety concerns, like I've always had. Now, one thing we need to think about is that those areas have a lot more recreational areas than what we do. What we have, my concerns are, is we have a lot of state highways going into the city, not really a lot of point-of-entry as far as recreational areas, other than crossing into Little Walnut, maybe Cottasand or Mountain. Speaking of all these police departments, I talked to the tenants, sergeants that are on the street, they're actually dealing with some of these issues. I can tell you that they're very minimal, pretty much next to none. The hardest part for them was probably getting people into compliance, which is going to take some time. It's going to take some manpower from me, I'll be upfront with you, but they don't have a lot of problems with them, and those are just the facts that I had collected. I said the last time, if you wanted to try out a trial period, I'm willing to work with all of you on it. That's a lot of these departments, what they did, they had trial periods, it went up to a year. Of course, it's going to take me a week or two to educate my staff down the ranks, also educating the public. I have a couple of pamphlets already that Farmington has given me, that I can vote for by the public if you wish to go that route. But again, just want the public to know that I'm here. I have my safety concerns, but I'm willing to work with you if you decide to have it.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, yes.
Counsel William Smith?
Thank you, actually, I do have some questions for the chief. Chief, do you mind? So, if this ordinance were to pass, what would you say is a reasonable implementation process and timeframe for it to become effective? One of the things I'm curious about is what are all the other state organizations that would need to be involved and informed? How long would it take those entities to bring their internal processes up to speed? What would be the timeframe to train your force to look about what to look for and how to educate and identify unusual situations? Because I know that there are going to be some unusual situations. What problems would you foresee in terms of implementation and enforcement?
Well, necessarily, that's going to take some time, it's going to take some manpower, that's why I recommend a year if you decide to do trial basis. The state organizations have to be involved, of course, we're NBD. You go on the New Mexico Game and Fish website, it gives you lots of information, the pamphlet that we already have, gives you lots of information, got to get them involved. We need to give our ordinance to them if we decide to go that route. That way, the public can access that, out-of-state people can access that and know what our ordinance involves. can access that, out-of-state people can access that and know what our ordinance involves. Also educate the public out-of-state, we can recognize if they register the UTVs out-of-state, and this is according to state law and New Mexico Game of Fish, that they are actually, if they have the sticker for on-highway use, that we recognize that here in New Mexico. Again, our local agency, municipal court, obviously is gonna know about the ordinance, we need to advertise it through our website. It's gonna take a couple of weeks to educate my staff, it's gonna take, I know we've done it in the past two to three weeks, and I can't remember the cell phone, how long it took us to educate the public, but it's gonna take some time, and that could be a month long, time to educate everybody. I'll make sure that my, my guys are real familiar with the ordinance, that they know it. There's some, still some things that I'm even learning on it as we go, but we're gonna have that, you know, we talked about any unusual situation that we might have, we're gonna run into that, these officers, we're gonna have to use discretion, we might go to trials, certain trials, and, you know, we'll kinda know from there, but it's, it's gonna be a learning process, if that's what you all decide to do. Again, these other agencies, they don't have a lot of issues, since they passed, and this was back in, I think, 18, I think one department talked about having maybe one or two knowns complain a month, and that was TRC, and I think Gramps had maybe 18 total calls for service since January of last year, so I think that's something we need to take into consideration. But we'll see, you know, my, my biggest concerns is the state highways, and, and where, where we live, we don't have a lot of those recreational areas, so many of them like the other departments do. So, we'll just have to wait and see if we decide to go and, and take it on trial basis.
A follow-up question?
Counsel Lehman Smith, I think another entity that the chief alluded to was the DOT. We need to, to work with the, we'll need to work with the DOT and their board to, to look about access through, through the state highways that come through town, 180, 90, Highway 15, see what, what they would be willing to approve us to, to use. I doubt that they're allowed to use 180 or 90, maybe 15, I doubt it, but we, we don't, we don't know, there's not enough data to, to identify exactly what we would need to do with them, but that's, that's a big one, and I know the chief has been working on, on that, looking at that, it's just, might have just...
You know, speaking of small areas, like Red River, the marshal up there will tell you, yeah, you contact DOT, they'll do a study, they'll come down, it's got certain criteria, you know, it's hard to say if we don't need criteria here. You know, I have, I think it's gonna be about, we need the criteria, because we have so many coming in, but you never know, but Red River has access, Farmington has certain portions of state highways, State Road 15, I think probably the one that they would consider, but that's my opinion.
I have a quick follow-up question?
Go ahead, Chief.
So, a quick follow-up, you just mentioned, of course, that currently, state law prohibits driving on state highways unless they've been designated by the DOT Commission as being appropriate, and they have a long list of criteria that they, they need, but that means that, would that mean that the local state police would be on the lookout for recreational off-road vehicles driving on the state highways?
Correct, and of course, we work with other agencies, especially state police, so that way they can be on the lookout for them.
Would the Sheriff's Department also be on the lookout?
Yeah, we meet with them periodically, we have our department head meetings, and marshals will always sharing information, so we definitely work with them on.
Okay, all right. As I was reading a lot of stuff, really just curious, one of the things that I came across again and again is that these recreational off-road vehicles are not considered by the MDD as being street legal. They say that they will never registered as street legal, or unless they were told by the state to do so, so I just wanna say that if this ordinance were to pass, we'd have to call them, you know, admissible in Silver City, not really street legal. So, you're, you're smiling at it, too.
Yeah, I saw that on the state law, too.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You.
Any other questions for Chief Portillo, Counsel Bettison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask you, what would you suggest in educating the public about the fact that they cannot drive right now if this passed? On 180, on 90, they can't drive in from Santa Clara, because there is no, within town on those highways, there's no traveling that they can drive on, and it's not town-owned, even though the town does spend money on them, that it's not town-owned, parking state highway, and they have the right to do the designation. So, I mean, I agree with you that Highway 15 would be the most unlikely place, but how people would get there would be to cross it, you know, from a street, a town-owned street, to cross the highway, that is, in this ordinance, would be legal, but going on any of them for any distance to the market or something like that is gonna be somewhat difficult, depending on where you shop and where you live.
That's correct, that's what I mentioned earlier, the state highways are a concern for me, but if it passes, I mean, there's something we need to get on right away, and I've already actually got with my staff and pre-prepared, in case it does pass, that way we're ready to gain, and puts me out there, of course, Road 13 is a really good one to get it out there. I'm gonna try to have the officers interact with certain UTV users and educate them as much as possible.
And one more. I think that in Red River and in Farmington, in several places, they won't let the ROVs or the UTVs drive down their main street.
I don't know for sure.
I cannot.
I don't know for sure.
And, and on the map for Red River, I know that it designated that as a red area, meaning no UTVs, and Red River does go a little bit further, for some of the outline things, they do allow access for ATVs, but that's because they're directly related to recreational areas for them. But they have to trail them through those areas, they can't drive on the roads, so that's an ATV. The same thing happens with a UTV, and not being able to drive down the main street, Farmington's the same way, except for small segments. So, part of Red River's main street goes directly out to the forest, and that was the first section that was approved by the DOT's Commission on state highways, to go into the forest and into the trails. So, and, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a question for Counsel Ray.
Sure.
So, when you said something about, we're not gonna allow it on our main street, did you mean putting in something that would say that there would be no UTVs on Bullard? Or did you mean trailing or something like...
Trailer, trailer and in, yes. In other words, if you get your UTV and you put it on your trailer, and you go downtown and you unload it there to drive, no, we're not gonna do that.
Okay, is that in the ordinance?
No, that's, that's, that's an amendment that we're gonna make.
Okay, okay. But I just wanted to clarify that, so that they wouldn't be able to park and offload it, which is similar to Red River and Farmington and a couple of places.
Not downtown. I don't, we don't wanna allow downtown.
The trailer and then offload.
Not that they would do it, but somebody might do it, and then we're gonna be asking questions, so might as well say now, not, not downtown.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Ray, for clarification.
And also, some of the comments that have been made here, okay, and I don't, I'm not gonna try to be rude about it, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna test to be rude about it, but we're trying to see if we can pass the UTVs here in Silver. If they pass them over there, they got their laws over there. So, let's focus here on Silver, see if we can pass it here in Silver, and if we need to make, if I need to make an amendment to this, I will make an amendment to it. I, I truly believe that we all deserve a chance, have a quality of life. Some people like quality of life, different, different aspects. Why not give it a chance? Why not give it a chance? We never want to retry something. If it doesn't pass, then I'm gonna ask for a special election, and let the people vote for it. Those are, those are the, those are the other options, and we have never, ever said we would wanna go on last downtown, or Sunday Sunday thing, we never have said that. I don't know why these people keep bringing up the same thing over and over again, we're not doing that, and we're not doing the ATVs downtown, we're not, we're, we're, and a lot of people that have these vehicles here, more elderly people, we're not young kids. You ought to try it, you know, and see, and I like to say that's why we try it.
Counsel, comment, did you have a comment?
I just have two things. A, I was hoping that you might be willing to make an amendment now, this evening, saying that this would happen for a trial period of one year, so that we can see if it'll pass with a trial period of one.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, but in everything I've researched, we don't, we don't necessarily need a trial period, because if something comes up, we can simply rescind this if we pass it. It's just a simple vote to rescind this ordinance.
And then the other thing I just wanted to mention was that, when I went to that meeting with the, the Forest Supervisor, who became the National Forest, this is one of the things that we discussed, and he was very, very supportive of this. He would like to eventually, gears down the road probably, see a system that starts in Silver City, goes to the county, and then goes to the forest. He really feels that that's an economic driver that we could really, really use, and, and that they would like to be a part of that, of that discussion, and also helping with, potentially talking to the DOT if necessary, and, and working together, so that, that's something new that I hadn't talked to him before, and so it was interesting to see his point of view and, and how it could connect different systems, not just in Silver City.
Any other, one more, one more comment, if I may. If this NOI were to pass, I would myself, and I'm sure Chief Portillo, would go right away to the, Mr. Trent, also, Mr. Bianboa, we would go to the state and ask for permission to see what can be done, how can we do it right. You can go from Broadway, across Hudson Street, in a, in a straight line, not Hudson Street, because that's a state road, even though it's in the city. Same thing with, with any other one, so if you wanna go do shopping at, at the food basket, you can go there, from, from one side town to the other side town, but we are gonna strongly and say that if it passes, just in the town of Silver City, we will work to see with the DOT, to see if we, we be able to utilize them on, on Hudson, and, and a little, a little part of an island, from Hudson Bridge up, up to Silver Heights, maybe to Walmart. That'd be the only, only thing. And then, and then, maybe we can get to be able to the county and say, okay, we can start doing more things to enjoy having outside the state limits, or go around the county road, or go a different part of the state road. Little things, little baby steps, little baby steps, and that's all I have.
Any, go ahead, Counsel Bettison?
So, I appreciate what you just said, Counsel Ray, but I believe that it takes council action to go to the DOT Commission. So, and, and that's what you're saying, is that begin to work to talk with them, but then it would become before the council, if this passed. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I have, I have a comment. I have spent a tremendous amount of time researching and studying and thinking about this. I've called a lot of mayors who have this ordinance in their community. For example, I talked to the mayor of TRC, and she said, when we were considering this, we had a packed council room, half the people were for it, half the people were against it, and it was a pretty emotional meeting, but the council passed it, and then those who were opposed to it went out and did a special referendum, they could do that in TRC, and it didn't pass, so their ordinance holds that they can have them on the street. And she said, the amazing thing is when I drive around downtown, I don't really see that many, and those that I do see are usually driving slow, they're not speeding or making a lot of noise. She, she said, the noise thing is, is a bad rap, because at decibels of 88 or whatever it is, that's not any louder than a lot of automobiles are today, some of the muscle I talked to Representative Martinez, Representative Dow, I talked to Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor Harry Morales, because at the time, he was a senator when this was passed.
Wait, let's, let's move forward.
Yeah. And so I asked him about the question of, I've heard several times, that, that the, that the bill that passed was, there was some comments made by the governor that these be only used in going from one recreational area to another, and all three of them said, when they deliberated it, nothing was further from the truth, that, I mean, at least when they passed the bill, that was not their intent. Their intent was that they be used on city streets, paved roads. I've got a lot of emails and phone calls from people in the community, I've got about 150 here just of emails, and then all the phone calls, and a lot of people were concerned about different things. Some people were concerned about noise. Now, I'm not saying that two wrongs make a right, but when you look at what's going on in our community with the big trucks, and the motorcycles, and a lot of the other vehicles that just make a lot of noise when they're going down the street, some people were concerned about safety, that, well, if one of these got hit by an automobile, there would be one winner and one loser, and the loser would be in the ROV. But yet, we have a lot of small vehicles in the community, and I suspect that a similar thing would occur if they got hit by a big truck. So, I think it's, it's important for us to realize that, you know, when I ran for mayor, one of the things I said that I was gonna do was try to be open-minded, and that's what I've been fighting this for so long in my mind, and, and I especially like the idea that if things come up that are gonna cause us problems in the community and with the police force, that we could just simply rescind this as quickly as if we passed it, if we do that. So, I'd like you to think about those comments. Now, the other thing I have to say is, there's a lot of elements in your ordinance, but there aren't enough. If we want people to go to speed limit, they need to have a speedometer, and if they're gonna be driving a map to dark for a little while, there needs to be an illuminated speedometer. They need more than one stoplight, they need turn signals, they need, just like, almost like a regular car. They even need a windshield if the, if they don't wanna wear a helmet and goggles. So, there's a lot of things that we could do to amend this, and I'm not saying we need to try and sort through this tonight, if it got passed, then we could come back and revisit it with an amendment, could we not? Just hypothetical question. Mr. Scavron, you wanted to make a comment?
My only comment was to, Counsel Ray spoke about an amendment regarding parking of the vehicles with trailers downtown. Parking in town is regulated by the police department, and Alex can order the police department to designate certain parts of town as areas where these flatbed trailers cannot park. And I just spoke with Alex, and he indicated he was willing to give such a direction regarding Broadway and Bullard, and maybe other streets could be added, depending on the needs of the community. So, Counsel Ray, I don't see that you need to make that particular amendment.
Okay, thank you. One other thing I wanted to say, to go. There's other issues that are involved, too, I'd like to see us address. For example, I think it was Counsel Lehman- For example, I think it was Councilor Amon Smith brought up the issue that if there is some sort of an inspection, that there could be a fee, where we could recoup the cost of what it's costing us to do all of that, and that there be some sort of a certification by the city that the vehicle meets all of the standards in the ordinance. But in order to recoup that, there would have to be a cost associated with that. So that's another element that I wanna throw out. So if it's approved, I still think we got work to do, to make them more safe. And you've promised that, that you, Counselor Ray, that if we give you the chance, you'll prove us right, that you can police yourself, and, you know, if it got passed, we would expect that. We would expect the groups that work with the O O Vs to do educational programs, and to work with the community. Because there's a lot of people in the community that are real concerned about this, I have to tell you. They're concerned about the noise, they're concerned about the speeding, they're concerned about things like Counselor Amon Smith was, where they go tearing up the hill right outside where you live, and all those kind of things. So those are the other comments I wanna make. So, did you make a motion already? Okay. Is there any more comments? Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor, for what you said, because I have gotten similar amounts of phone calls and emails, you know, it's now kinda half and half, and I think that, as most people need to know, we can change and amend the ordinance as needed, if the chief comes back and says, we have concerns, this is what's happened, we can do further adjustments as needed, and we can, if things just kinda don't work out the way we hope they will, we can rescind it, and then revisit it. So we can do that with any ordinance, including, as has been mentioned, the fireworks ordinance. So I just want people to know that ordinances are not set in stone, they are for the time when they're approved, but they're not set in stone, meaning they can't be amended, that they can't be rescinded, they can't be, you know, reworked. So to those people that are against this, I would just tell you that I personally, after the discussion today, and some of the research that I've done, that I am moving towards according to this, to see where it goes. This is what we had to do with a number of other ordinances, and from the report that the chief gave, that it doesn't seem to be as bad, and other, that it's not what we all think is gonna happen, and the work that Counselor Ray, and the chief, and the various groups that are interested in this, will work with our Silver City P D, and will work together to see if this can really be an ordinance that's really going to work the way it's currently written, or if there needs to be some tweaks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
May I? I move to approve of ordinance number twelve eighty-one, and ordinance amending section twelve dash seven dash nine through twelve dash seven dash nine point ten of highway motor vehicle definitions, et cetera, of the Municipal Uniform Traffic Code adopted as a Silver City traffic ordinance in chapter fifty, section fifty-one of the Municipal Code of Town of Silver City.
Thank you. Is there a second, Counselor Connor?
Second, that motion is stated.
Okay. For motion and a second. Any other comments or discretion from the council? Counselor Amon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanna say that Mr. Trent Porto made the suggestion that a revenue stream could be developed by inspecting and, you know, having a certification. So I just wanna give credit, where credit is due, that idea came from him. I wanna say that of the probably forty conversations and emails that I have gotten, only one was in favor of this. So I just must have a different group of people coming to me. And I also wanna reiterate a real concern that I've expressed before, which is that the state essentially said, you know what, we're gonna let municipalities have the liability of creating what is essentially another type of car. So if our then-senators and representatives really thought that it was okay for recreational off-road vehicles, which every off-road organization says should not be driven on city paved streets, if they really thought that was okay, then the state could have taken responsibility for having done that, rather than throwing the liability to us municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments, and I specifically talked to Mrs. Scavron about that, because that was one of my concerns last time. And his comment to me was that, well, since the state approved it, they're also would be a partner to any liability. So they've taken on some liability, probably a lot themselves. Any other discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
With all due respect to my colleagues, nay.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three to one.
There you go.
Next item is new business, eleven eight, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one, a resolution designating the location of an election day polling place for the town of Silver City Municipal Office election to be held on March three, two thousand and twenty. Ms. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor, and Councilors. For municipal officer elections in March of even numbered years, the town council may act in relation to the duties of the Board of County Commissioners set forth in section one dash three dash two, N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, in setting the polling places and consolidating precincts for the municipal officer election. This council action is required by resolution in June, July of odd numbered years. Resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one, that's before you tonight, is for that very purpose, and consolidates the precincts of District one and District three into one precinct, and sets the polling place as a voting convenience center at the Silver City Women's Club at seventeen fifteen Silver Heights Boulevard. This location is also used for county elections, and meets all of the standards set in the election code. And I'm asking for your approval of this resolution.
Any questions for Ms. Mackey? Counselor Amon Smith?
Thank you. Ms. Mackey, does this mean that if every election, we will have a similar resolution?
Every June, July of odd numbered years.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Edison?
I'm sorry, I move to approve of resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one, a resolution designating the location of election day polling place for the town of Silver City Municipal Officer election to be held on March third, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
And Mayor, I'll go with it, Mr. Ray.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or further comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Smith? In closing, I would just like to ask the community to be open-minded about this, too. And let's give it a chance to see if it works. Let's give it a fair chance. I've been in lots of communities where these things are legal, and there's a pretty good atmosphere in those communities. My hometown is one of them, so please give us a chance for this. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move adjourned.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are hereby adjourned.